Good evening. My name is James Kane and I have the distinct honor to serve as your town moderator for this special town meeting. Please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it serves, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to our special town meeting. To ensure good order, tellers, please raise your hands so that all town meeting members can see you. All town meeting members should have their stickers clearly displayed so that all can see. Town meeting members are asked to sit on this side of the tellers. Only town meeting members should be on this side of the tellers unless provided for a specific permission by the moderator. Residents wishing to witness this evening are asked to sit in the rear seating. All department heads are asked to sit to my lower left so that it's convenient to answer any questions. By way of reminder, our town meeting has a long and proud history of civil discourse and orderly debate. No outbursts in support or opposition of a member's comments or vote outcome are allowed. Furthermore, when a town meeting member wishes to be recognized, please await my clear recognition and proceed to a microphone. If you are unable to move to a microphone, one will be brought to you. In order to ensure that all of your colleagues have an opportunity to speak, please limit your initial question to one and one follow-up if needed. Please hold your additional questions until others have been heard. Rest assured, you will be recognized. At this time, I'd like to recognize those to my left and right. To my right, town clerk Sharon Thomas, town council Steve Madouse. Our finance committee is further across the stage with its chair, Gene Budenhagen. I'll ask him to introduce his colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm just going to ask each one of our members to introduce themselves, starting to my right.
Jim Flynn.
Diana Bowley.
Dennis O'Connell.
Vikram Chabra.
To my left, town manager Kevin Mizikar and chair of the select board, who I'll ask to introduce herself and her colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Teresa Flynn. I am joined by Chair Beth Cassavant, Clerk Carlos Garcia, and members Michelle Conlin and Greg Richards.
Thank you. Town meeting members, I'd like to take a moment to update you on the matter of electronic voting. With the Attorney General's approval of town meetings' actions with regard to electronic voting in hand and the associated appropriation, I have asked the town manager's office to move forward with the acquisition of the system described to you at the annual town meeting. We will keep you updated and ensure appropriate training is made available for members prior to use at our annual town meeting. With the introductions complete and update provided, I'd like to take one moment to recognize the service of a certain gentleman who's in the hall this evening. As you all know by now, our superintendent of schools has announced his retirement, and I think it's appropriate, given his years of service, his strong leadership and accomplishments with the system, which he is first to share with all members of that system, we take a moment and recognize Mr. Sawyer. Our town meeting operates under the laws of the Commonwealth, bylaws of the town of Shrewsbury, and Town Meeting Time 3rd Edition. I've examined the warrant and the constable's return of service, and both are in good order. I ask for unanimous consent to dispense with the reading of the warrant and constable's return. Hearing no objections, so ordered. To the town meeting warrant, as we walk through the warrant, we will call the article. The chair and vice-chair of the select board will move the printed motion and second it respectively. I will then ask the finance committee for its recommendation. Mr. Mizikar will then provide a crisp, succinct description of the article. That having been said, Article One.
I move the printed motion under Article One. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends Article One.
Very good, thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article One? Oh, Mr. Mizikar jumped you, sorry about that.
No worries. Good evening, town meeting members. In the spring, town meeting approved a total operating budget of $161,356,042. There are two primary components of change that we're proposing to that budget this evening. The first is a series of transfers between certain lines within the budget that was approved in May. These changes total $155,000 and do not increase the total amount of money being spent within the budget. You can see on the screen there are four accounts that we're looking to transfer funds from: the group health and life insurance account, salaries and wages within the police department, salary and wages within the building inspectors department, and professional services within the public health department. $100,000 from within group health and life insurance is available based on enrollment numbers, that number of employees and retirees subscribing to the town's health insurance program. These funds are to be reallocated to increase funding for municipal staff professional development, staff wage competitiveness, and addressing recruitment and retention challenges. Where specific needs have been identified and confirmed, as today, we're directing those funds into the particular departments. $25,000 in the police department salary and wage line item is available because we secured a grant that will cover certain wages. These funds will be redirected to the annual subscription lines to cover the costs of the TASER leasing program. $10,000 within the building inspectors department is available because of a staffing vacancy. These funds will be redirected to hire contractors to cover these duties on an interim basis. Finally, with regards to the transfers, we'll be using grant funds to cover certain expenses within the public health department, and these funds will be redirected to cover salary and wages within the same department. The second component are net increases to total expenditures as follows: a $500,000 increase to pension retirement system to cover unfunded liabilities of the pension system. The fund is approximately 96% funded, and this increase, which will likely be the new normal going forward, is projected to get the system fully funded by 2030. Second, an increase of $10,000 for the highway budget to cover general repairs and improvements to roadways, including private ways. And finally, due to changes in state laws requiring additional notifications to property owners when they are behind in paying their taxes, $7,000 to the treasurer collector's budget. To reiterate, we are seeking town meeting's approval to make $672,000 in adjustments to the annual budget. That will result in $517,000 in additional expenditures and $155,000 in revised expenditures in comparison to the budget that passed by this body in May. We'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Questions or comments with reference to Article One? Yes, Mr. Kirk.
Chris Kirk, precinct one. How many people are receiving pension benefits from the pension fund?
Could you say that again? I couldn't hear you.
How many people are receiving pensions from the pension fund?
I'll ask the director of the retirement board to step forward and introduce himself.
Hello, Gregory Gatzianas, executive director of the Shrewsbury contributory retirement system. That number is always subject to a little bit of fluctuation, but as of right now, it's approximately 344 people.
Okay. Just a question about the wording of the motion. $517,000 from taxation, does that mean from tax revenues, or does that mean raising taxes to cover the cost?
Mr. Mizikar.
Two changes that fall within the taxation category that make these funds available. First is a higher-than-expected new growth number. So new growth is any new property that was built in town over the past year, so that's higher than expected. And then the second, which falls under the taxation category as well, is additional state aid. So when we passed the budget in May, the state hadn't finalized their budget, and we used a conservative estimate for the amount of money the Commonwealth is going to provide to the town. That falls under the category of taxation when we're making this motion.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article One? Yes.
Martha Dearing, precinct four. Could you just tell me what is S and W full-time?
Sure. Salary and wages.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article One? Yes, right in the middle.
Cash Jane, precinct four. Sorry about that, folks. Question specifically about the retirement transfer here. So based on the material given to us, we fell below that 100% funding back in 2022, clearly didn't recover within a few years. So why is this coming up now and not when it was clear that we were below where we wanted to be? Because, you know, I'm thinking 500 grand over a couple of years with those returns, it could have been 600 by now. So I want to know why we've waited on this.
Mr. Mizikar.
So part of it is opportunistic because we have sufficient funds within the tax levy to be able to make this additional contribution. We prefer to use the tax levy because it's a recurring source of revenue, and we do think we need to keep it at this higher level. We're in constant communications with the state's oversight body and our actuary, and given these circumstances, that's why we made the move now. The sooner we make this move, you know, the lower the annual contribution would be if we're trying to achieve full funding by 2030, which is the goal.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article One? Yes.
Bishop Hilton, precinct seven. I know you answered this maybe at a past meeting, but how far off are we from full funding right now?
We're almost 96% funded.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article One? Yes.
Brian Costello, precinct nine. On the expansion of the tax base through increased new growth, where did the tax base grow? Was it commercial or residential percentage-wise?
I don't have a percentage with me this evening. This was growth that occurred during calendar year 2024. I can provide that when we set the tax rate at the select board's meeting on Tuesday, the 28th, but I don't have that with me tonight.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article One? I'm not hearing or seeing anyone, so we will call the vote. This is a simple majority. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article Two.
I move the printed motion under Article Two. Second.
Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends Article Two.
Mr. Mizikar.
Article Two proposes to adjust the solid waste and recycling enterprise fund budget. Enterprise funds are voted on and appropriated outside of the operating budget, so this adjustment needs to be considered as this separate article. In summary, we're proposing to reduce total expenditures by $160,000 over what was passed in the spring.
Comments or questions with?
I have a couple more if you don't mind.
I'm sorry about that. Mizikar.
There are a few challenges unique to the development of the FY26 budget for the solid waste enterprise that we're looking to overcome. First, lower-than-anticipated retained earnings, which is the fund balance of this enterprise fund at the end of any given fiscal year, and slight year-over-year declining bag sales resulting in declining revenue. The FY26 solid waste budget was set at $3,572,935,000 with approximately 50.4% of the budget being funded through the tax levy. With regards to the revenue, Article Two seeks to reduce the estimated revenue from bag fees by $185,000, eliminate the use of retained earnings because there is none available, and increase the amount of tax levy by $225,000. With regards to expenditures, additionally to balance the fund, we're proposing a reduction of $160,000 in expenditures. Although we have done our best to right-size this budget based upon the changing revenue model, we're not 100% confident that we wouldn't need to make a few final tweaks when we come back to the annual meeting in May, but we're, you know, rather confident that these adjustments will help us overcome the emerging revenue trends that we're seeing in this. So in summary, due to changes in the revenue expectations, we're seeking to increase the use of the tax levy that supports this program, but lower total expenditures overall for this program.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article Two? I'm not hearing or seeing any. There are no questions, we'll move to a vote on Article Two. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article Three.
I move the printed motion under Article Three. Second.
Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends Article Three.
Mr. Mizikar.
This article proposes to make adjustments and amendments to the FY26 capital improvement plan by seeking approval to purchase and equip an ambulance at the cost of $540,000 by transferring $250,000 in funds that were approved at the May annual town meeting for fire apparatus and appropriating $290,000 in free cash. This is the first step towards creating an emergency medical services program for the town through the fire department. Data from recent years shows that ambulance response times, especially when mutual aid is required from surrounding communities, are growing to unacceptable levels. Additionally, the frequency of mutual aid requests are also increasing. The town currently contracts with Worcester EMS to provide ambulance services. Growing demands on Worcester EMS is driving reduced service levels in Shrewsbury. By establishing our own EMS program, we believe this to be the best way to ensure our service response time meet the expectations of the communities. Although this article is solely to purchase an ambulance, I would just like to take a few minutes to share what an EMS program would look like for the town. To run one ambulance 24/7, 365 days a year, will require nine additional staff members, one EMS captain to oversee the program, and eight firefighter paramedics on the ambulance. EMS programs are run like utilities within municipalities because the program will bill insurance companies and individuals for the services provided, which ultimately generates revenue. A few examples of EMS revenues from similar programs are shown on this slide. Next slide, Alex. This slide now shows a conceptual budget range for the first full year of implementation. As you can see, the costs will likely range from $1.2 to $1.7 million per year. Therefore, revenues will cover the majority of the operating costs of the programs, if not all. While we desire to have a program that brings in sufficient revenue to make it cost-neutral, our ultimate goal is to meet or exceed industry standard response time every time an ambulance is needed within the community. Adding our own EMS program while continuing to partner with Worcester EMS for at least the next two years will ensure we meet this goal. Again, this article seeks $540,000 in funds that we have on hand to purchase and equip an ambulance. This request comes now because it will likely take 18 to 24 months to build and equip this ambulance, which will align with the establishment of the full program that we were able to provide a brief overview of this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Comments or questions with reference to Article Three? Yes.
Jay Dean Garnett, precinct two. I had a constituent reach out to me and ask regarding insurance for this. Do you know if the Medicare supplement programs will pay for the town? There are some billing issues. And if we switch from Worcester EMS to town ambulance service, will we have an issue with Medicare supplement insurances? Thank you.
Mr. Mizikar.
I don't know that I can get into the details of Medicare supplemental insurance reimbursement rates. I know it's a statewide issue. Chief, I don't know if you have any specifics on that. I will say we will be eligible to bill for up to the Medicare maximum when we send these services out, if someone is on that, and then subject to the rates and expenses that are reimbursed through all other insurance companies, just like every other municipality does. So we're confident that because we'll be using experienced third-party biller and work with a medical director, that we'll be able to maximize the amount of revenue that we do attempt to receive when we're providing these services.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Three? Yes, way up.
Caroline Maycomber, precinct nine. I just had a question. I don't know if I missed it on the slide. I saw wages and salaries for the potential new EMS team that would be built, but I didn't see anything about potential future pension funding that would be required for those employees. I think it was nine employees that you said.
Yeah, so that's within the admin benefits overhead line item, which is the next bottom line.
Okay. And then follow-up?
Sure.
Sort of unrelated. Have we looked at how overtime might be increased? In other words, would the amount we pay towards overtime kind of increase with adding this type of benefit?
Mr. Mizikar.
Yeah, adding this type of service, we definitely will incur overtime. We will staff the ambulances with two paramedics, or you know, paramedic and EMT 24/7, and that would be our minimum manning model that we use. At times when we're training additional paramedics, there'd be a third member onboard, so we will incur overtime. We have an overtime estimate that's up there for these purposes right now. We're working diligently to really build out the cost. This cost model was generated using other ambulance services in a region which are rather mature, so we're confident in the numbers, but yeah, absolutely, there'll be overtime costs associated with this program, but we'll budget for them.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Manella.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fran Manella, precinct three. What we're saying here is that we're committed. You're going to buy an ambulance. In two years, you have to be ready, and you're going to spend this money. Are we, we're going to be committed, so it has to work. You don't want to be funding this out of general revenue fund. It's got to be a break-even proposition, right?
Mr. Mizikar.
Well, that's our hope. Our number one focus is making sure that we respond whenever there's an emergency medical need within the community. At times, you know, I can let the chief speak to this, you know, we have not met satisfactory response times with our current system, and we feel we can best control that if we staff it ourselves and run our own ambulance. We think, you know, based upon what other towns do in the region, and we have a high confidence level that we'll cover, you know, most if not all the costs, but again, our number one priority is getting to anyone's emergency need when they have it.
So response time being the primary driver, if it's going to cost us a little money, well, maybe so. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Further comments or questions, right down front.
Deb LeBeau, precinct five. Just curious as to what the long-term plan is. Do you see us needing one ambulance or more than one ambulance? And what happens if there's a big problem, like a disaster? Do we rely on mutual aid in those situations?
Chief, why don't you step forward this evening and answer the two questions, please?
Good evening, thank you. Seth Colby, fire chief. Response time is one of the big priorities. Right now, the past two years, we've averaged the national standard is to get to 90% of the calls in nine minutes, in under nine minutes. The last two years, we've hit that mark at 60%. 60% versus the 90%, so that's the primary driver there. As far as long-term, one ambulance will not cover the total volume in the town of Shrewsbury. The hope is that we can do it in partnership with UMass, which is why we're looking to get this established while we still have a contract with them. In the future, we may continue that contract, or we may be looking to bring in a second ambulance. Westboro right now runs three ambulances, North Row's running two, and we do rely on mutual aid. In fact, those mutual aid partners are coming in right now, and even though we have UMass, they're covering calls in Shrewsbury when they're not available, and that's one of the driving factors with response time because now they're coming from Westboro or they're coming from North Row as opposed to within Shrewsbury.
Question answered? Further comments or questions? Ed.
So just so I'm clear, Ed Bolter, precinct one. For this fiscal year, it's just the $540,000. And is it next fiscal year that these other costs start to kick in?
Yeah. Our goal, depending on when we'd have a high confidence level to have the ambulance in place, would be to start services within the first three months of calendar year 2027, so it would fall within next year's operating budget, so it would be a portion of that portion of that year.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Three? Yes.
Hi, Moira Miller, precinct one. Where would this ambulance be housed? And then is the plan that with additional ambulances, they would be located across the town?
Mr. Mizikar.
So this ambulance would run out of headquarters. There's sufficient space within there. We don't need to make any modifications to the building. And Worcester EMS would continue to operate out of Station Two, which is off of Harrington Avenue. And then, I would assume, depending on if Worcester EMS is there, whether, if we start to operate a second one, you know, it'd either operate out of Station Two or Station Three.
Mr. Malina.
Jason Malina, precinct ten. Question and a comment. The first question is, and I just want to make sure that I'm hearing that this is a plan that will be more fiscally sound rather than for us to have the service in-house primarily versus a contract with Coastal and UMass and whatever other regional players there are in this space? And I see you shaking your head.
Mr. Mizikar.
Yeah, the private ambulance industry is not reliable right now, and it's declining, and we're seeing a lot of that drawing the Worcester EMS ambulances out of Shrewsbury because there's just not a lot of private actors in the area right now.
Okay.
Comment?
Yes, in the comments, thank you. And so I know from personal experience with dealing with my mom at the time when she had to use ambulance services over the years, that sometimes insurance companies don't pay for that bill for other circumstances. And so it's left to, you know, to the person who had the emergency need to foot that bill. And oftentimes, these are seniors that don't have the money to pay $3,000 to go one mile. And it's really sad. So I am hoping that as a, you know, as a government body, that you would look at a way to, one, account for that there will be losses and, you know, revenue losses that are just unaccountable, and that there will be some way to be compassionate in trying to receive those funds when it's not available for seniors that can't even pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article Three? Yes. Krista.
Krista Dupree, precinct one. To dovetail Tommy Malina's comments, I definitely understand that situation since it is a contract for service and there are ambulance companies that do not cover within your insurance company. My true question is, what other towns with our population and projected growth with building of additional housing, how many ambulances do they typically have? Thank you.
Chief.
Alex, can you go to the revenue slide?
There's a lot of variables. Depends on, obviously, population is one factor. It depends on the type of population. There are a lot of assisted living facilities or retirement communities, and the call volume tends to be higher. and the call volume tends to be higher. What's the proximity to hospitals? One advantage we have for turnaround time here is our close proximity to the hospitals, so we don't have lawn transport times, so that's able to reduce the number. But there's no magic number. A lot of communities, we looked at Watertown, they have two. They have the same population as us, but they also have mutual aid and they have partnerships. And no matter... We could have four ambulances, and we're still gonna have to have partnerships with our neighboring communities, because there are times that we may have five or six ambulances in town at the same time.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 3? Ms. O'Connor?
Donna O'Connor, Precinct 2. Unfortunately, I've had enough family members using the ambulance service, and every time we've had to call, the Shrewsbury Fire Department and Police Department show up first, and they've gotten excellent service and excellent care with skill. We need to be sure that our residents get the best care possible between home and the hospital for whatever the emergency is, and we're not getting what we used to get from the UMass system, which was very inexpensive when we started out, and the prices have skyrocketed. So, I think it's a good business decision to address this through the town, and I hope everybody votes for this.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 4? Yes, way up back.
Brian Costello, Precinct 9. I think this is great, by the way. I'm glad we're gonna have an EMS system. But I want to just clarify that if we vote on this, we're basically also... Are we approving the staffing that's gonna come in, or does that come in at the next regular town meeting or at another time?
Mr. Mizuka?
It'll come in at the future when we have solid expenditure requirements and numbers for you. We're not there yet. I was just trying to give you a little insight what the program will look like.
Yeah, and if, God forbid, somebody, we voted against that, I don't think anybody would, but if we voted against that staff, we're just stuck with an ambulance, or we just sell it or something? I don't know.
Yes.
I guess we just sell it, right?
We would sell it. I mean, as I said, it'll take 18 to 24 months to build there. High demand. We could offload it the next day if we wanted to.
And if we say that January 1st, '27, we have the ambulance, it's ready to go, are we assuming that we'll be hiring those folks six months before, seven months before or so?
Several months, probably not six, but depending on what we get for a pool, how many of them have significant experience as paramedics, we've got to be ready to go on day one with an experienced crew, so we'll time that appropriately through all our processes.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 3? Yes.
Yes, hi. Linda Sarkisian, Precinct 4. I'm just curious if the current procedure of having the Fire Department and the Police Department would continue with this proposal?
Mr. Mizuka?
Having them respond as well? Yes, it would.
Okay. Thank you. I think it's a great idea.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 3? Mr. Garabedian?
Where are Charles Garabedian, Precinct 2? Would our ambulances be used as mutual aid to other towns?
Yes. Yes is the answer. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 3? I'm not seeing any hands, and I'm not hearing anyone's voice. So therefore, we'll go to the vote, which is a simple majority. All those in favor of Article 3 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 4?
I move the printed motion under Article 4. Second.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Article 4.
Mr. Mizuka?
This article proposes to transfer $310,854 in opioid settlement funds from free cash to the opioid special revenue fund. These funds were received from state settlements in fiscal year '24 and flowed into free cash and can now be moved to a special revenue fund that was established at the May 2024 Annual Town Meeting for use in drug abuse prevention and opioid abuse prevention measures.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article 4? Mr. Kirk?
Mr. Kirk, Precinct 1. Who administers this fund?
Mr. Mizuka?
So, it falls in directly under the town manager accounts, but it's overseen by the Board of Health.
Thank you.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 4? Martha, good morning. Good evening. Hello.
Martha Deering, Precinct 4. As a substance abuse counselor licensed and certified, I'm interested to know, how are we gonna use this funding? What are we going to do for harm reduction, prevention, all of those kinds of good things? I'm all for it, but I want to know how that's going to happen.
Mr. Mizuka?
Oh. Public Health Director Annette Garcia just came onboard this August with us. We're happy to have her and welcome her to our first town meeting.
Hi, I'm Annette Garcia, the Regional Health Director. So, we're forming a work group within town departments to really figure out what the priorities are of the communities. Within this work group, we plan to work with local stakeholders, both residents and service providers, to identify what the biggest gaps are in terms of substance use prevention, mental health supports, and programming for folks that want to utilize their counselors that are in active recovery or seeking recovery. So, it's really gonna be a holistic approach to address opioid and substance use across the lifespan, so thinking about preventative services as well as actual interventions.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 4? I'm not hearing or seeing any hands, anyone or any hands, so therefore, we'll go to the vote. This is a simple majority. All those in favor of Article 4 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 5?
I move the printed motion under Article 5. Second.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Article 5.
Mr. Mizuka?
This article proposes to appropriate $30,383.40 that the town is eligible to receive from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund for the $303,834 rides that originated in the town during calendar year 2023 and 2024 through transportation network companies like Uber and Lyft. These funds are received annually and must be used for some type of mobility purpose, and we dedicate them to sidewalks, crosswalk, and pedestrian mobility initiatives to promote alternative modes of transportation.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article 5? Yes. Mr. Kirk?
Chris Kirk, Precinct 1. Who administers this money? And is this money in addition to the state money that we get for road maintenance? Or is that funding reduced? Okay.
Mr. Mizuka?
This is in addition to what we receive for roadway maintenance, which comes in under a program called Chapter 90. So, it's in addition to that, and it is overseen by the Department of Public Works, looked at by the Highway Director and the Engineer with the oversight of the Director as we're repaving roads or we have a crosswalk need. A lot of the enhanced crosswalks that you see in town with the flashing beacons and things like that is where we use these funds.
Thank you.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 5? I'm not hearing or seeing any indications, so therefore, we'll move to a vote. It's a simple majority. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 6?
I move the printed motion under Article 6. Second.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee does not recommend this article.
Mr. Mizuka?
So, town meeting members, we're recommending defeat of this article. This is a placeholder in case we have any bills from a prior year. We have none. And to dispose of the article, we're requesting that you vote no.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 6? Not hearing or seeing any. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No, there we go. Motion is defeated. Okay, we will now move to Article 7, which is a petition article. Town meeting members may recall... Just one second. Town meeting, I take it you're gonna move it for the petitioner? Very good. Just one second, please. As a petition article brought forward by residents of the community, we will now ask that a member of town meeting place it before the body, because the lead petitioner is not a member of town meeting. I'll recognize...
Julie Boor... Oh, sorry. Julie Boor is Precinct 6.
And you'd like to make the motion?
Yes. I'm gonna make a substitution motion rather than move what was mailed to town meeting members in their packets. I move that the town authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for the enactment of special legislation, which will allow for the residents of Shrewsbury to decide on the ballot for the next state election or annual town election following not less than 60 days after the effective date of this act, whether to continue to fluoridate the public water supply and, further, that the General Counsel may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Select Board approves amendments thereto before enactment by the General Court. Which amendments shall be within the public purposes of said petition?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second has been made. Therefore, we are now... We will get underway with Article 7. I will ask the petitioner to introduce himself, and the petitioner has been given a time period up to 10 minutes to present, and then, I understand, we will hear from the Board of Health. Good evening.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sam Rajwani. I'm a senior at Shrewsbury High School. I'm also recovering from the flu, so if I'm mumbling or you can't hear me in the back, just let me know, please. I'm more than happy to speak up. So, I began educating residents about water fluoridation in Shrewsbury as a school project, but the project concluded at the end of my last school year. I've decided to continue on with this effort because of the residents. A lot of people have reached out to me, telling me how important this issue is to them. They've told me about their skeletal fluorosis, hypothyroidism, diabetes, and many other issues that they link to water fluoridation. And today, I'm just here as a Shrewsbury resident who was called the act by other Shrewsbury residents. I'm going to give a presentation to provide some details about Article 7. If town meeting votes in favor of Article 7, then Shrewsbury residents will be able to decide whether or not we want fluoride in our water for the first time in our town's history, although it has been in our water for 73 years. So, Shrewsbury added fluoride to our water in 1952 before fluoride toothpaste was available, and the state statute governing water fluoridation, which is mass general law, Chapter 111, Section 8C, was passed in 1968. The fluoride statute allows for a referendum process or a townwide vote on whether residents want fluoride in their water, but because our town added fluoride to the water prior to the current fluoride statute, Shrewsbury has never been able to go through with the statutory referendum process. As such, we need a home rule exemption, which Article 7 calls for, to put the question on our town ballot. I worked with Mr. Mizuka over the summer to understand how Shrewsbury could bring the issue to our voters, and he explained to me that I needed to look at how other towns that also could not follow the fluoride statute's referendum process brought the question to a town ballot. I researched the issue, and Mr. Mizuka helped me draft the language of what became Article 7, which is a two-part process for a ballot initiative. The bill goes from town meeting to the Board of Selectmen to the state legislature, and finally, back to the town for all the residents to vote on at a state or annual town election, depending on how quickly the article makes its way through the legislature. Voting yes on this article does not mean fluoride comes out of the water. It simply means the residents will be able to decide at some point in the future whether or not we want the water to continue to be fluoridated.
Sam, do you want to clarify the item under the Select Board?
Of course. So, the Select Board, as far as I know, does not have to petition the state legislature, but it's of my understanding that if town meeting votes in favor, they have no real reason not to.
Town meeting authorizes, and then the board will make their own decision. So, I just want town meeting members clear that the vote tonight pushes it to the Board of Selectmen for further consideration. Are they likely to vote in favor if this board asks them to do so? Who knows? But it's important for town meeting members to understand the subtle but critical difference. Go ahead, Sam.
Of course. So, many people don't know how intertwined the process of water fluoridation is with the sugar industry. The practice of water fluoridation was launched by the findings of a scientist named Gerald Cox in the 1930s, who was funded by the National Sugar Institute via a program called the Sugar Fellowship. He experimented exclusively on rats, and his findings only found fluoride to reduce decay by 20% on average, which is less than several other diets he studied. The papers that he's published his results in was filled with caveats, weakly supported assumptions, and contradictory results, yet it launched the practice that we use today. Water fluoridation is still championed by the sugar industry to this day, though. In 2020, a group of authors published a review refuting neurotoxic effects of fluoride. These authors were all either members of or closely associated with the International Life Sciences Institute, or ILSI for short. The ILSI is funded by companies like Coca-Cola, Kellogg's, and McDonald's, and according to Dr. Sarah Steele, a Cambridge University senior research advocate, this nonprofit organization has been used by its corporate backers for years to counter public health policies. Many sugar industry-funded scientists and doctors with undisclosed conflicts of interest have downplayed harmful side effects of fluoride and exaggerated its effectiveness as a solution to tooth decay. I've highlighted this, as well as many other key points on my slide. And the reason that I think it's important to mention is because many of the dentists and public health officials who promote fluoridation don't truly understand why many studies that support it cannot be taken at face value. If you have any questions about this, I'd strongly encourage you to read an article entitled, "The Sugar Industry's Effort to Manipulate Research on Fluoride Effectiveness and Toxicity: A 90-Year History." It is the first citation on the second page of my work cited. Quick water break. So, all of us know the benefits of fluoride that have been championed for decades, and to most, if not all, Shrewsbury residents, it is the status quo. Fluoride can prevent and even reverse early stages of tooth decay, and notably, it's proven to be more helpful when it is being applied topically via the brushing of teeth or application of dental varnishes, for instance, than when it is being applied systemically via the drinking of fluoridated water or taking of fluoride supplements. Systemically-applied fluoride only helps teeth that are developing or erupting, and children and infants can easily get it through things like food and formula. And even for those with developing teeth, topical fluoride application offers the most significant and immediate benefits. The risks associated with systemic fluoride intake and thus water fluoridation are less well-known and have come to light relatively recently. First and foremost, dental and skeletal fluorosis are the most well-known problems associated with systemic fluoride intake and thus water fluoridation. Dental fluorosis is a very common condition, primarily seen in children, that ranges from mild to severe. It's permanent, and the damage to enamel can't be reversed. It is mostly cosmetic, although some studies have been done that link dental fluorosis in children to skeletal fluorosis in elderly people in the same communities. Skeletal fluorosis has three stages. Stages 1 and 2, which are the most common, are marked by pain, arthritis-like symptoms, and potentially bone spurs. And then, in 2024, the United States National Toxicology Program, which is the federal body regarded as toxicity experts, performed a systematic review of all available literature that considered whether or not fluoride posed cognitive harm. They reviewed 72 studies and found that fluoride, at least at levels of 1.5 mg/L, is associated with reduced IQs in children. Scientists have also observed a statistically significant association between fluoride and adverse effects on children at levels lower than 1.5 mg/L. The United States National Toxicology Program has also very recently conducted a pooled benchmark dose analysis to more precisely define the hazard level of fluoride. This analysis was found to have a very strong statistical methodology, which is something that many studies both for and against water fluoridation lack. It specifically found that a 1-point drop in IQ is to be expected for each 0.28 mg/L of fluoride in a pregnant woman's urine. Notably, maternal urinary levels range from 0.8 mg/L at the median all the way up to 1.89 mg/L, depending on degree of exposure. And then, vulnerable subpopulations such as diabetics, people with poor kidney function, children, the elderly, those with thyroid disorders like hypothyroidism, and those who suffer from malnutrition are all particularly vulnerable to fluoride's toxic effects for a variety of reasons. Fluoride bioaccumulates more in people with poor kidney function, as well as in children. Fluoride inhibits insulin production and reduces insulin resistance, both precursors for type 2 diabetes. Fluoride also inhibits the thyroid's ability to absorb iodine, which interferes with its ability to produce hormones and can cause hypothyroidism. Notably, poorer people are more likely to suffer from malnutrition and are thus more likely to be in these vulnerable subpopulations without the means to afford avoidance measures. without the means to afford avoidance measures. Another water break.
During the water break, I'll ask Gene Bodenhagen. Did I ask you to report from the Finance Committee?
You did not, not yet.
Okay. I'm sorry for skipping that. Would you please issue your report?
The Finance Committee does not recommend this article.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex, for catching that.
All right. Picking up. So a good example of where we see fluoride's risks is in the 2024 ruling from the federal court case Food and Water Watch versus the EPA. After being showed evidence, which was interpreted by experts from both sides, the judge, Edward Chen, ruled that fluoride at a level of point seven milligrams per liter, or point seven parts per million, posed an unreasonable risk to children's IQs. Point seven milligrams per liter is what we currently have in our water now. And Judge Edward Chen argued that inappropriate margin of safety was not applied to fluoride. He advocated for an hundredfold margin of safety, but applying just a tenfold margin of safety that accounts for vulnerable subpopulations, the safe level of fluoride in our water would be only point four milligrams per liter, which is, of course, less than the point seven we currently have. In April of this year, the EPA announced they would review new scientific information on potential health risks of fluoride in drinking water. And many people that I've talked to believe the majority of Massachusetts cities and towns fluoridate their water, but this actually is not true. Only about a third of Massachusetts cities and towns have fully fluoridated water, as can be seen from this map. Among the towns that don't fluoridate their water are many of Shrewsbury's neighbors, like Boyleston, Worcester, Milbury, and Grafton. And Worcester specifically has rejected water fluoridation on ballot questions four times since nineteen sixty-three, most recently on the last referendum in 2001, with the rationale that water fluoridation is an unethical practice. Due to new data coming out about the harms of water fluoridation, I, along with many other residents, feel it would be incredibly beneficial for Article seven to be put on the next ballot. At the end of the day, water fluoridation is something that residents pay for with their tax dollars. It's forced medication arguably without informed consent, and it's an incredibly nuanced issue with convincing arguments made both for and against it. A vote in favor of this petition is a vote in favor of the education of residents and the democratic process. They're more than able to weigh what experts on both sides say and make their own decisions. And as the people drinking the water, they feel the weight of the decision the most. All Article seven is asking is to let the residents whom town meeting works for decide whether or not they want to continue on with a medical intervention seventy-three years after it began. It allows the residents to reexamine an ever-changing science and vote for whatever they feel is best for themselves and their families. I ask for you, please, to vote yes on Article seven on behalf of your constituents to send the question of water fluoridation to the ballot for a townwide vote. Thank you all for your time. That was my presentation.
Sam, thank you very much. If you'd care to take a seat down front. At this point, we'll have the Health Director update the town meeting members. Feel free to sit right down. If you'd like to.
Hi. Again, my name is Annette Garcia. I'm the Regional Health Director here for the town of Shrewsbury. The Board of Health has asked me to put together some information to provide for town meeting members about what is fluoride and how is it regulated in our water systems. So a little bit fluoride is the ionic form of the element fluorine, and it's naturally occurring in many rocks, plants, and soils. Here in Shrewsbury, we utilize sodium fluoride for our water. And calcium fluoride is the most common naturally occurring fluoride mineral. When it's added, when these components are added into water, it creates the ion fluoride, which is what our bodies uptake to help strengthen our teeth and inhibit or reverse tooth decay. Fluoride has also been found to stimulate new bone formation. So what happens when we have too much fluoride in our bodies? So one of the most common side effects is dental fluorosis. And as this was described previously, this can vary from mild cases where you'll see white, little white dots on your teeth, to more severe cases where you'll see white or brown staining. It can also cause skeletal fluorosis, which is extremely rare in the United States. There have been only five recorded cases of severe skeletal fluorosis, and these were found in individuals that ingested more than ten milligrams per day of fluoride over twenty years. But it's also important to talk about why fluoride is important. So tooth decay or dental caries were found to be the single most common chronic childhood disease, and they're experienced at 1.5 times the rate among historically underserved populations. It's found that this results in over fifty-one million school hours lost each year due to dental-related illnesses. There's a substantial body of work that shows that community water fluoridation can decrease chronic tooth decay across all socioeconomic statuses. It's also important to note that chronic tooth decay can negatively impact other health outcomes across the lifespan, like diabetes and cardiovascular disease. Fluoridated water supply is a low-cost intervention that has significant impact on reducing health disparities. So a little bit about how fluoride in water is regulated. The Environmental Protection Agency has a role in addressing potential health risks associated with fluoride exposure under the Safe Drinking Water Act. This Safe Drinking Water Act is based on enforceable minimum containment, contamination levels, which the EPA evaluates available health data to set maximum standards for where no adverse health effects are anticipated. Current guidelines state that that maximum contaminant level is 4.0 milligrams per liter. Additionally, they develop what they call maximum contaminant level goals. So these are more protective goals for contamination in water of various elements and items that we find in our drinking water. And currently, fluoride is set at 2.0. These maximum contamination level goals are set to protect the most vulnerable population. So looking at exposure to protect children, pregnant women, and the elderly. Within the Safe Drinking Water Act, the EPA is required to conduct six-year reviews of various elements which this regulates to evaluate new and emerging data and to inform revisions to those levels. The most recent six-year review took place in 2024, and the EPA found that there was insufficient data to support the selection of fluoride as a candidate for revision. That being said, in April of 2025, the EPA did say that they will review new science on fluoride, but there have been no updates made yet. The next important thing to talk about is the National Toxicology Program. This is a division of the U.S. Department of Health and Services, Health and Human Services, that regularly identifies potentially hazardous substances and evaluates their effects on human health. In 2024, they published a monograph, which did a systematic review of available data on fluoride as it relates to IQ and neurological development among humans. Within this study, they looked at a number of different studies that were conducted to evaluate this. And I think it's important to note that none of these studies took place in the United States. Many of these studies were conducted in countries and areas of the world where their natural fluoride levels are 1.5 milligrams per liter or higher. Many of these studies took place in China, where their natural fluoride levels can be as high as nine milligrams per liter. In addition to this National Toxicology Program creating this monograph, the National Academies of Science, Engineering, and Medicine did a peer review of this monograph and found that it cannot be used to draw conclusions regarding low fluoride exposure concentrations, including those typically associated with drinking water fluoridation. That's due to the fact that many of the studies evaluated looked at fluoride levels that are much higher than those we find here in Shrewsbury. There have been some civil action and bench trials related to fluoride in drinking water. In 2016, environmentalist groups petitioned the EPA to ban or restrict the addition of fluoride in public drinking water supplies. In 2024, a federal court ordered the EPA to take action on fluoride levels in drinking water, but did not specify which action should be taken. Central evidence in this case included that National Toxicology Report that I spoke about previously. The EPA has since appealed this decision, but no additional information is available. Based on this information, it's important to note that the majority of systematic reviews of scientific literature do not link drink water supplies fluoridated to a concentration of point seven milligrams per liter to severe health, adverse health outcomes. Removing fluoride from community drinking water could remove a critical health intervention, which improves oral health and aids in reducing health disparities across the lifespan. On October eighth, 2024, the Shrewsbury Board of Health voted unanimously to maintain the current level of point seven milligrams per liter fluoride in the public water supplies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Onto Article seven. Are there comments or questions with reference to Article seven? Yes. Town meeting member.
Vikram Chawra, town meeting member, precinct seven. I would like to take a little time to express why I disagree with the petition under Article seven, why I voted no on Finance Committee, and why I will be voting no later tonight. My disagreement is civil and in no way intended to be disrespectful to the supporters of this petition and to the intelligent young man who has presented it. Water fluoridation is considered to be one of the greatest public health success stories of the twentieth century. According to CDC data, it has been shown to reduce cavities in children and adults by over twenty-five percent. However, social media, misinformation, and incomplete data has given rise to misplaced doubt. As a three-decade veteran in the technology industry, with experience that spans from the dot-com, fiber optics, hybrid cloud, data centers, and now artificial intelligence, I can personally vouch that random Google searches or 140-character tweets that show up on our social media feeds do not always represent the truth. It is well-known that mega-technology corporations collect individual data based upon our social media and internet behavior. With that data and using generative AI bots, they can build accurate personality reflections of each and every one of us. Some of these advanced heuristics are so sophisticated that they can determine if a user is excited or stressed while reading an article by measuring by how hard or soft they're squeezing their phones. We are thus shown information related to what we want to see and read rather than what we should. Companies do this to enhance revenue collections via clicks on links. The side effect is that misinformation inflates opinion rather than fact, thereby skewing public debate. Scientific studies need to be properly vetted and peer-reviewed by experts and not by, via, and not via random Google searches, which, as explained, will often return biased results. Every study needs to be verified for statistical compliance of data, proper distributed sampling of populations, adherence to accepted scientific methodology, and comparison with results across various geographical locations. Only then can a study truly be accepted by the scientific community and presented to the larger population. No matter how intelligent or educated voters may be, the vast majority of us will not have the time to vet studies presented to us. In such circumstances, public debate will be relegated to social media wars with random unverified information from the internet being used to propagate opinion rather than fact.
Vikram, could you please move it along?
It must also be understood that much of the information is not necessarily complete. The National Toxicology Program clearly states that concentrations 1.5 parts per million and above could be associated with a reduced IQ. This study's conclusions have been rejected both by the American Association of Pediatrics and the American Dental Association. The recommended fluoride level in U.S. drinking water is 0.7 parts per million, which is less than half the number in the NTP study. Our town strictly follows the point zero seven parts per million number. I would like to also share that similar attempts to remove fluoride from other regions around the world.
Vikram, Vikram, I'm sorry. Could we?
Yeah, just.
Wrap it up, please. Thanks. Okay.
I would like to take.
He's going to wrap it up. Sure, absolutely. If they have something to contribute, absolutely.
So according to a study in Shrewsbury by the DEI Task Force in 2021.
Excuse me, Vikram, Vikram. Now, buddy, I'm trying to send you signals. Let's finish it up.
Okay, sorry. Okay, I understand.
Okay, thanks.
My apologies. So true governance in a democracy consists of elected officials who make rational, transparent, and intelligent decisions based on the collective interest of all residents. The people hurt most by this decision will be our low-income residents, who basically, according to studies, are worst hit by cavities and other dental forms of dental decay. I had collected a lot of data. I wish I had the opportunity to share it with you, but I humbly request that all town meeting members exercise their responsibility to all sections of society by voting no on Article seven. Thank you.
Town meeting members, the motion, as the substitute motion is before you with the highlighted language. Comments or questions with reference to Article seven? Yes.
Hi. Pat Convery, precinct ten. Great debate, great, great idea that's been brought before us today. I have to say personally, I'm not swayed by a lot of what was presented on either side, but there is one point that I am very interested in. It's a, the things I'm not swayed by are the health. We're talking about very rare, very rare medical conditions. And honestly, I don't drink a lot of tap water, so I avoid those ill health effects, and I avoid the beneficial dental effects, so. And I don't think I'm alone in that the population that drinks about as much tap water as I do, I think, is quite high. But the thing that really caught my eye is the slide from the Health Director. Welcome. Mentioned that this was regulated by the EPA, who regulates pollution. It's not regulated by the FDA, who regulates things that are intended to treat or prevent disease, right? So I would note that our, as a society, our role towards informed consent has developed quite a bit since fluoride was first introduced. We had some, what we would consider pretty backward ideas about informed consent back then. So I had a question, Mr. Moderator, if you wouldn't mind directing to the Health Director.
Certainly.
As a welcome present. If I get her as a health professional, what's your thoughts about fluoridation of drinking water in the context of, is it consistent or inconsistent with today's ideas of informed consent? That would be my question.
Are you comfortable answering that question? Which part throws you? The informed consent? Yeah. The Director is uncomfortable answering that, given the language of informed consent. Further comments or questions with reference, right down front?
Dave Lennon, precinct eight. You know, I trust the people who work at the Health Department. I don't trust, like me. I'm not the guy you want to make this decision. You know, I didn't study, I did pretty good in geometry, but after that, it was downhill for science and math. And I don't want to go down to the corner bar and ask those guys to make a decision about what my kids are drinking. I've got nine-year-old, they're almost nine, twin boys. Probably the oldest guy who can say that in this town. But, you know, my kids need the fluoride. They need to have strong teeth. Before I met my wife, I went on a date with a young lady from China, and she grew up in a town that had no fluoride. And she had gray, black teeth, and she was very ashamed of it. And so that's, you know, that's the future without fluoride. Gray, black teeth, or worse. You know, when your teeth are unhealthy, as was mentioned, it can lead to other things. But again, I have two college credits and introduction to oil painting. So I'm not the guy, and, you know, I'm not the guy who you want deciding fluoride. You want the people who went to school, like this lady here, to decide about this issue, the Public Health Department. I was doing the math earlier today, and that's always a little scary for me, but I lived in like six states and more towns than that. And every single town I was in, I think, had my back in this issue. They had a public health department which put fluoride in the water. And I ruined my teeth anyway, because I'm a drug addict. I'm fortunate enough to be twenty-one years clean, but I have no teeth. I have very nice dentures. I'm very pretty with my dentures. But again, I don't want to go to the voter and have them decide what my kids are drinking. I want this lady to decide what my kids are drinking.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Let's see someone who hasn't spoken yet. Go ahead, Ms. Boris. You made the motion. Go ahead. ahead.
Thank you, Julie Boris, precinct six. So as a citizen of Shrewsbury, I've been kind of trying to get the fluoride out of our water for over 10 years. Fluoride is forced medication without informed consent. And to the gentleman who's just spoke, if you want fluoride, it's very easily available and you can buy it in water, you can get it free, you can get it in fluoride toothpaste. But a decade ago, I had a really serious health problem, and it turned out it had to do with my thyroid. And my doctor, who went to Tufts Medical School, the first thing she said to me was, "Is there fluoride in your water? Get it out." And when I think about the, we talk about the most vulnerable, when I think about a tiny baby who's maybe bottle-fed, how much cumulative fluoride are they getting? Filtering fluoride out of the water is very difficult, it requires an expensive reverse osmosis filtration system. And only 120 of the 351 cities and towns, that's only one-third of the Massachusetts cities and towns, why are we the lucky ones that get not natural fluoride, but sodium fluoride, NAF, an industrial chemical? Several European countries do not fluoridate, and there's no huge complaint about massive cavities or tooth decay in the rest of Massachusetts or these countries. But this article really isn't about fluoride, it's about the democratic process. And while the gentleman who spoke before me may not want to vote, I want to vote, and I want the people of Shrewsbury to vote. I think they're smart and capable and educated of making their own decisions, doing their own research. There will be plenty of time for education on the question of whether you want fluoride and you can vote yes or no, but tonight is about the right to vote for the whole town. And I just want to add, my water is filtered, so I'm good. I'm here for everybody else, and I'm here especially for the children of Shrewsbury. Thank you very much.
Further comments or questions with reference to the petition article? Article Seven, anyone new? Right up this aisle. Franny, no, I'm taking that back, I'll get to you. Anybody new? Mr. McGee.
Dale McGee, precinct five. I'm a retired physician. I have spent decades reviewing the medical literature just as part of my practice. And one thing I'm comfortable telling you is that the medical literature is not something you look at and get an answer, it is not an encyclopedia, it is a discussion, a process that is continually going on in which scientists and medical researchers look at information, put forth their ideas, and discuss it. And then when we do our research, we are tapping into that. What that means is, is that not everything published is true. Not everything published is even the best thinking at that moment. And in order to really get a good interpretation of large bodies of literature, you really benefit from people who are familiar and educated with the topic, who have experience and perspective, who have the time and the resources to make a decision to benefit this community. We have delegated this to the Board of Health. That's what we get from them, and that's what we should get. What we have heard today are conspiracy theories, we have heard emotional things that say that pregnant women are harming their children because they're drinking fluoridated water, yet I know the American College of Obstetrics and Gynecology recommends fluoridated water and fluoridated toothpaste for pregnant women. We were told that parents shouldn't have their children use fluoridated water, and yet the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends fluoridated water and fluoridated toothpaste for children. And in addition to this, the World Health Organization at levels higher than what we have here in Shrewsbury is recommending fluoridated water. The American Medical Association, the American Dental Association, the American Public Health Association, the Surgeon General, every Surgeon General since the 1950s has recommended fluoridated water. And so with all of these bodies and with the advantage of what we have here with our Board of Health and their skills and their intent, we are well-served by what we have. And I would not like to have our public health policy determined by people holding signs on a street corner and screaming at cars going by. I agree with the gentleman over here. He is wise in that he knows what he doesn't know. And not all voters know what they don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions, right in the middle? Yes.
Hi, Kathy Flynn, precinct four. I have a question for Mr. Wajwani, our petitioner-
Certainly.
And I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I'm curious, since this really is about whether or not to have the town vote on this, and it's not really about fluoride, can you tell me other public health issues that we have sent to a townwide public vote?
That is a great question. Let me consult my giant binder. I don't, I don't know if I specifically looked into that, but I think the difference that I can tell you is that this referendum process is currently because of the way we put fluoride in the water prior to Mass. General Law, Chapter 111, Section 8C, being founded. This is the only way to get fluoride out of our water is by leaving it up to the residents. And I know the gentleman who spoke last said the Board of Health recommends fluoridation, which they do, but they notably did not vote in favor of or against the citizens' petition. They said that it should be left up to the people, and, sorry, I'm sort of skirting around the question a little bit here. But basically, it's interesting and it's different in the fact where this is one of the issues where it would be in our water forever unless it was brought in this specific way. So it's sort of, I don't, I'm assuming that a lot of other public healthings haven't been treated the same way, but it's also a different issue from a legislative standpoint. I don't know if that really helped answer the question, but like, for instance, on August 31st, way back in 2016, the Board of Health stated that town meeting is the appropriate body to remove fluoride from the water. And I talked to Mr. Mizikar, and this referendum process is really the only way to get it out of the water. So it's a little different in that way. I'm sorry, does that answer the question?
Follow-up?
So are you saying that the, is this still on? That the select board couldn't make the decision or the Board of Health couldn't make the decision, that only sending it to the townwide vote is the only way to make that decision?
Yes.
Okay.
It's weird, it's legislative, you need the referendum-
Okay, but you can't give me any other public health issue-
No. Like the gentleman who spoke over there, I know, I know what I don't know.
Okay, that's fair.
That requires more of a clarification, I think, so Mr. Mizikar?
So the Board of Health has the ability, they are the controlling entity for fluoride in the drinking water, so they could choose to remove it without a vote of town meeting or further action.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions? Yes.
Robert Cray from precinct two. I just wanted to follow up on that. Could, Mr. Mizikar, could the Board of Health order without an order from the selectmen?
Correct.
Unilaterally?
Yes.
To remove?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions? Anybody new? Right up the aisle here. Paul.
Good evening, Paul Zeicas, precinct one. The real issue here is whether we want to entrust the smart and talented residents of Shrewsbury to make this decision. The Board of Health failed to weigh in on this. They chose not to weigh in on it. I suspect if they felt strongly one way or the other, they would have weighed in on it. We've heard from someone who suffered through the dot-com bust, and that was their experience, and a gynecologist who thinks that this is going to be, the decision's going to be made on a street corner with people streaming at cars, I think it's disingenuous. The reality is that we live in a community that is entitled to make this decision on their own. We have a board of selectmen that repeatedly talks about community engagement. What better way to engage the community than in an issue like this? We're all learning about this right now, we're all having a dialogue about this right now. We've all added to our humility a little bit by realizing we don't know everything about this. So let's have a spirited discussion in the coming weeks and months and leave this up to the people that it impacts most, and those are the people who drink this water on a daily basis. Thank you.
Ed.
First, I rise in support of, Ed Bolter, precinct one. I rise in support of Sam's initiative because this is an issue that touches every household in town. So I think every household in town ought to have an ability to educate themselves to the extent that that's possible and make their own decision and then vote their conscience. A fact that everybody keeps overlooking. This was recently adjudicated in a federal court that the, that fluoride at the levels we're using causes harm, is now, is a harmful agent. This is a settled law that it's harmful. So I have a question. Well, and secondarily, this gentleman said that, you know, we have delegated that responsibility to the town to make this decision for us. We individually, I can't force this person to take a harmful product against his will, he can't force me. We together, and all of us in this room and everybody in this town, doesn't have that authority. So we don't possess the power to delegate that authority to you, okay? That's constitutionally unacceptable. So now I'm asking, because we have settled law and the town is acting with authorities not given, that we can't give, by what lawful authority are you continuing to use this forced medical intervention with this, with this product?
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar, would you like to take that?
It's permissible under the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Okay, further comments or questions, next to Ed. We'll get you next. Yes. No, you can both.
Mr. Moderator, I'm new at this, I always had one town meeting and it went three days, and I noticed that there's ways for us to move to vote, so how does that work? Where's the threshold and how can I ask?
Well, I would ask that you hold that for a while, because many of your colleagues have their hands up.
I tried.
So though you could move it, I think in order to ensure everyone has their questions answered, I'd ask you to hold it. Ms. Faustian.
Jackie Faustian, precinct four. So I have a few things that I'd like to say. First of all, I think we can all in this room agree that we can't always trust what we look up on Google or what's a peer-reviewed study, because there's so many conflicting studies, older studies compared to newer studies. And I just, my own real-life experience, I know the gentleman over there, I don't know where he is, but as far as he knew somebody that didn't have fluoride in their water and they had a lot of issues. And I just want to say, we've been here for almost 30 years with well water, no added fluoride. I still have teeth. And my whole family, they all have great smiles, not a lot of cavities. My husband, from the day he was born, was on well water. No added fluoride, three cavities his entire life. So I think we really just need to weigh everything out. I think the residents are more than capable of doing their own research, figuring out what they believe is credible versus what they believe isn't, right? Like, we can all use our own critical thinking, we are the ones ingesting this sodium fluoride, right? We're the ones paying, actually, to have it added to our water. Now the fact that the Finance Committee is weighing in on it so strongly, you're going to save money, you're not, like, I don't understand why the Board of Health didn't take a position and the Finance Committee did? That's just odd to me. I have a lot of points, I could probably go on forever, but those are some of the major points I wanted to make.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to this article, right up second, and then we'll get to the one behind you. Yes.
Patricia Minton, precinct seven. I came from a town that didn't have fluoride, my teeth were horrible as a kid. Both my girls grew up in Shrewsbury. Of the two children, I think that one of my children had a cavity, so it doesn't, it does work. Have no problem with the fluoride in the water.
Right behind you. Yes.
Elaine, oh, thank you. Elaine Vadney, precinct six. First of all, I'd like to, I'm very grateful to Sam for all his work educating the people about fluoride. I've seen his presentation, I think, four times. And I never knew there was a difference between calcium fluoride that exists in Shrewsbury water as opposed to sodium fluoride, which is now being added to our drinking water for 73 years. I also heard Sam's the smartest person at Shrewsbury High School. Several people contacted the select board, asking them to give Shrewsbury residents for the first time in history an opportunity to decide if they still wanted to have sodium fluoride added to their water. Cheerperson Teresa Flynn stated she had not received enough correspondence-
Excuse me, could you please move the mic closer?
Oh, she had not received enough correspondence from residents regarding this request. As a result, a citizens' petition was filed. I spoke to the DPW Director, he said he'd stop adding sodium fluoride to our drinking water if the Board of Health tells him to do so. At the most recent Board of Health meeting, they agreed to remain neutral regarding a ballot question with regards to removing sodium fluoride. I received a copy of the bag of sodium fluoride as well as a safety data sheet. The bag has danger signs with skull and bones on it. Here's a few tips that we pay for regarding the data sheet. Potential health effects: targets organs, kidneys, heart, gastrointestinal system, skeleton structures, teeth, nerves, bones. Hazard statements: toxic if swallowed. Causes skin irritation. Causes serious eye irritation. Harmful to aquatic life with long-lasting effects. Here's some precautionary statements. Wash skin thoroughly after handling, this is what they go through. Do not eat, drink, or smoke when using this product. Avoid release to the environment. They have to wear eye protection, face protection, and wear protective gloves to take this out of the bags. If swallowed, immediately call a poison center. Rinse mouth, if unskin, wash with plenty of soap and water. In the eyes, if it gets in the eyes, rinse cautiously with water for several minutes. Remove contact lenses if present and easy to do so, and continue rinsing. This is just a few of the things on the bag. Secondly, I'd like to thank Greg Richards and Carlos Garcia for believing in the democratic system and allowing the citizens of Shrewsbury the opportunity to decide if they still want sodium fluoride added to our drinking water. This was done at the last select board meeting. Teresa Flynn, Michelle Conlin, and Bath Caspian voted against the Democrat process. Third vote yes. Please let the residents of Shrewsbury decide if they want to discontinue adding sodium fluoride to our drinking water. Thank you.
Right in the middle.
Naveen Jain, precinct four. I just want to point out-
I just want to point out two things. First of all, appreciate the discussion, the rigorous topics that are coming up. But I just want to point out that the petition in front of us is not about adding or removing fluoride. That's been said before. It's specifically saying, asking the Select Board to bring this forward. So if we zero in and focus on that, the rest of these types of discussions can happen afterwards. So just want to point that out.
Right on the aisle.
Hi, Karen Rosaci, Precinct Seven, also a member of your Board of Health. I just wanted to take a moment and let all of you know, the Board of Health, we do spend a lot of time researching all the information that we discuss at these meetings. We dedicate our time, we volunteer our time. I have been a nurse for 22 years, a nurse practitioner, doctorly-prepared scientist, and I've looked at all of the data. And that is why I voted to keep fluoride in the water, based on the science. As Dr. McGee very clearly stated, I'm not going to rehash that, but most of our bodies that govern our practice are recommending this. I just also want to be clear that at the last Board of Health meeting, we chose not to take a position on this. I can't speak to my other two colleagues, but I would like to tell you why I didn't take a position. Because I feel like my role on the Board of Health is to provide medical advice and public health advice and not advice on how you should get something on a ballot. That is what town meeting is for. That doesn't mean that the Board of Health does not think that this is an important issue. And I'm really proud to say that I'm a member of the Board of Health. I actually petitioned very hard to get on this Board of Health with Town Manager Mizikar because I believe in it. I believe that more than ever, we need faith in our Board of Health to make good decisions. We have three very clinically competent people on your Board of Health, including Dr. George Abraham, who is a pioneer in medicine in our area. So I think we should be fortunate, and I'm not just saying that because I'm on the Board of Health, but as an experienced nurse, like, I really care about the people in this community. And if I didn't, I wouldn't be volunteering my time every month. And it's not just a once-a-month meeting, everybody. It's emails every day. It's research articles that we are doing on our own time to make the best decisions for the town. So I just wanted to clear up why I didn't take a position on this article. But I'm very confident in the research that I have read, that my colleagues have read, that this is a safe thing for our community. And there are a lot of people now, with a look at social determinants of health, that do not have the finances to pay for dental care. We are seeing that more and more. We have lower-income people in our town. This is not a town of the rich anymore, okay? So there are people that are struggling, and maybe some of us are not struggling, but I guarantee you that there are people in this town that cannot afford to take their children to the dentist. Thank you.
Further comments or questions, right behind Mr. Manella. Then, Mr. Manella.
Tony Bonaventura, Precinct Four. First of all, the essence of this article is whether we're going to decide in this room, this issue, or we're going to allow the voters of Shrewsbury to decide this issue. And whatever the issue was, I would always lean towards the voter of Shrewsbury. I'm in Precinct Four. You know, I may know one or two percent of the people in Precinct Four. I don't know what their anxieties are, their health issues, if they love fluoride, if they don't like fluoride. But I think Mr. Rujuani bringing this opportunity to the town is a wonderful idea. This will give us plenty of time to have the debate that we can't have tonight on whether we should or shouldn't have fluoride in the water. And whichever way it goes, we'll all be able to manage it just fine. As we saw by the map earlier, it's kind of split in the state already. But I would like to say that I would have been completely apathetic towards this whole idea of fluoride in the water until I stumbled upon a health issue over these last few years. And I won't get into that too deeply, or hopefully not at all. But what I would like to say is, there was an email sent out by Mr. Rujuani, and I had been thinking about something after seeing that email. And one of the other town meeting members asked a question that was actually on my mind, and the answer came from Mr. Rujuani. So a lot of the data around fluoride started in the, you know, the positive effects of fluoride in the water started in the 60s and 70s. That's where you start to see the health of, or the reduction in cavities. And that coincided exactly with fluoride toothpaste. And Mr. Rujuani had sent out, I believe it was, it wasn't in his presentation, but a very impressive stat from, I think it was The WHO, that showed that countries around the world who did and didn't have fluoride had exactly the same effect when toothpaste had fluoride added to it. So if we give the opportunity for the voters of Shrewsbury to vote on this in seven months or maybe almost a year, I'm not sure, it's a minimum of seven months, but it could be much longer, then hopefully there'll be some forums set up where there will be a debate, pro and con, and we can learn more information like that. Very good chart that was provided by Mr. Rujuani that we do not, yeah, it's not up there though, right? Yeah, he sent it around by email, and I was really impressed by that statistic. So, you know, I'm not going to answer my health issues, but there are things far better for your body and for your teeth than fluoride. I had devastating consequences, which involved my teeth, while taking fluoride, and the answer was not fluoride. It's something very simple, I won't get into tonight, but hopefully we can have this conversation and have these type of discussions. Because it is, again, I would have been apathetic before, but it's a very serious issue that needs to be discussed, I feel. So I hope that as town meeting members, we won't take away from the people that we represent the opportunity to have that discussion. So I will be supporting this article, and I thank Mr. Rujuani for bringing this forward because at the beginning, I was very apathetic towards you, but now I appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Mr. Manella.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fran Manella, Precinct Three. You said something prior to all of this discussion, I want to clarify. Did you say that it's the opinion of the town council that the Board of Select people, Select Board, is not obligated to follow the vote of this town meeting and make that recommendation to the general court? Is that correct?
The question before the board, before town meeting tonight authorizes the Board of, can you hear me, Fran?
Go ahead.
This authorizes the Board of Selectmen to take an action. They will then decide if they take that action.
Very good. So the Board of Select, the Select Board already has an opinion on this. They did not recommend it at their meeting. They voted it down. Is that not correct?
That's my understanding of the record.
Okay, so now we're going to come to them after we vote here and say, hey, we want you to do this even though the Select Board says they don't want to do it.
That's the process, sir.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions? No, no, sir. That's the fact. That's the law. They are authorized. Are they likely to do it? We'll see if this passes it. Yeah, the petition is to authorize, and that's what you're doing. Mr. Kirk.
Chris Kirk, Precinct One. Again, to repeat what's been said several times before, this is not a vote on whether we should fluoridate the water or not fluoridate the water. It's just whether the people should have an opportunity to vote whether to do that. The opposition to this article seems to assume that, of course, if the electorate were given the choice, they would overwhelmingly vote not to fluoridate the water. And therefore, they can't be trusted to be given the vote because they'll make a foolish decision. I don't think that the people of Shrewsbury are fools. Every day, they make very consequential decisions. They decide where to live, get mortgages, where to send their kids to school, and whether they're going to have surgery or not. They make all sorts of important decisions, and they don't have perfect knowledge of these things. But somehow, civilization continues. And if the voters of this town are fools, then that means that all the town meeting reps in this room and all the members of the Board, Select Board, were elected by fools. I don't think they're fools, so.
Mr. Segelnic. No, no, John's next, I'll catch you next.
John Segelnic, Precinct Two. Couple points. In reference to the lady that read off the back of the package that told us about all the problems that this can cause, I mean, anybody that takes prescription drugs, if you look at all the side effects, based on her comment, none of us should take any drugs because we'd be in the same boat with all of that particular issues. Health problems. Some people say, I didn't have fluoride and it worked out great, and some people are on the other side. Through my family's history of health problems and conversations with doctors, usually the conversation comes back to a lot of health problems related to hereditary. So, yeah, you had strong teeth and you didn't have, you didn't have fluoride. It might be part of your hereditary. Lastly, why I'm not in favor of this and why we shouldn't take it to the town vote. At a town election, and I've worked the polls for the last 15 years, usually 7% to 10% of the population comes in votes. That's not a lot of people. So people with this petition, it wouldn't take very much for them to round up a group of people and sway the vote for the other 90% that don't show up. We keep saying we should let the people choose, but again, look at the history of town elections. Usually, you only get 7% to 10% of the people voting, so it's really not a plurality.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. Anand Sharma from Precinct Nine. So I have a question for Health Department. I would like to know, since this one is introduced in 1952, after that in 70s when we have ultra-processed food, they're also adding some kind of fluoride in the food. So there's, the range of that is like point 321. So the Health Department is considering that also when they are going 4.7 for adding down the water.
Question to the Director of Board of Health.
Yeah, Board of Health. Yeah, Board of Health, yeah.
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
Question is that when this point 7 is introduced in 1952, that time, there are no ultra-processed food there. So they introduced in 1970 when it increased the fluoride level in the food also. So the Department of Health is considering that fact also in their calculation or not?
So recommendation has been set, and they actually changed in 2015. So there have been, you know, change recommendations based on changes of the other available sources of fluoride.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions, right there, yes.
Louise Garone, Precinct Eight. First, there is no assumption that the people of Shrewsbury are fools. What we see here is an attack on the structure of the Shrewsbury government. And you're asking us essentially, if you vote for this, to make a vote of no confidence in the Board of Health. We created a Board of Health of experts who we respect because they specialize in this. And now we want to throw this to a general populace who are indeed educated, who are indeed intelligent, who do indeed have certain rights. But we are voting no confidence in our Board of Health. And we are also abdicating our responsibility as members of the town meeting if we say, oh, we can't decide this, we need the voters to decide this. Come on.
Yes. No, no, right behind you.
Julia Cassavant, Precinct Eight. I am not in favor of this article. I don't think these things should be put on the ballot. We should not be debating science at the ballot. That is for experts to help us decide and to weigh in on. Everything has effects. I mean, the only difference between side effects and effects of a medication are whether or not you want them to be happening. I mean, the dose makes the poison. Bananas are partially radioactive. Should we all stop eating bananas? Because if you eat 100 of them, you're going to end up radioactive. Maybe don't eat the sodium fluoride out of the bag by the fistful. That's a good idea, right? That's why it's on the bag. Don't do that. Basically, I went through a lot of the sources you listed in your email, and not all of them you can get without paying for, I will say, but the ones that you could, and the ones that I definitely obtained legally, you could see a lot of it doesn't actually correlate with what you put on there. I mean, I came across a study that was titled something like "The Effects of Fluoride on the Skeletal System." And I read through it, and it listed fluoride can be very detrimental to the skeletal system. I'm like, okay, here's something that might change my mind. And I kept reading, and I kept reading, and then I got to the graph. And let's see, how much fluoride were they giving the animals in this study? 15 milligrams. Boy, that's a lot more than what we have in our water. It's almost like the dose makes the poison. And there's people that have stood up and they've given their anecdotal evidence on what's happened to them. But that's anecdotal evidence. When we have good science that's been done over many years, it's probably a better choice to listen to that than your neighbor who said, this hurt me, you should probably stop drinking it. But again, outliers exist. But I think it's probably a better idea to put our faith in our public health officials and not put conspiracy theories on the general ballot. I know you say this isn't about fluoride, but I don't think this is something we should even be platforming. I just don't. Thank you.
Mr. Campanello.
Paul Campanello, Precinct Six. I'd like to move the question.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded to move the question. That takes us to an immediate vote on Article VII. All those in favor of Article VII shall signify by saying aye. Yes, sir. This is, oh, excuse me, Mark. Thank you very much. Thank you. I was testing to see if you were paying attention, so thank you. The question is on whether or not to move the order. I apologize to all of you. So a vote in favor is to end debate. A vote against is to continue debate. All those in favor of the motion shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. We will now move to a vote on Article VII. All those in favor of Article VII shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
I'm going to say the noes have it. We will move on. Oh, yes. Do we have seven in support of that? We have seven. Very good. I was hoping we wouldn't miss a meeting without one. So if we, I could now ask the tellers to take their positions. I think we only have one, a literal new member of town meeting, so you all folks know how we do this. We will call all of those in favor and ask, don't do it yet. We'll ask them to stand, be counted by the tellers, and then we will ask them to sit down. And then we will ask all those opposed to stand. The tellers will make the count. We'll do the calculation. This is a simple majority. So I'm going to ask all of those in favor of Article VII to please stand and remain standing, please.
12.
15.
Hold on. Six, is that what you said? Six. 19. You may take your seats. Please take your seats. And now I would ask all of those opposed to Article VII to rise and remain standing until you are counted.
20.
23.
21. 44.
You may remain, you may sit down. Take your seats, relax. What's that? On this matter, 52 in the affirmative. On this matter, 52 in the affirmative, 108 in the negative, the article does not pass. Article Eight?
Motion under Article Eight.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article Eight.
Mr. Mizikar.
Mr. Moderator, I'm waking my computer back up. I will be joined by Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Girardi in a presentation regarding Article Eight, which requests funding for a feasibility study for the addition and renovation of the Shrewsbury High School. This article proposes, or requests, the use of $3 million to conduct that feasibility study. That $3 million is made up of two components. The first is utilizing free cash that we have on hand. The second part comes from borrowing authorization. Because the MSBA reimburses the town for, or participates through a grant program with the town, we don't ever foresee the need to borrow the funds. We will just utilize the free cash that we have and allow for the reimbursement process to keep us whole. But for the details of what a feasibility study is and how we will proceed for this project from this point, through the moderator, I'll turn it over to Dr. Sawyer.
Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Town Meeting members, for your attention this evening. Joining me this evening shortly will be Chris Girardi, our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations for the school district, and Mr. Todd Bizidlow, the Principal of Shrewsbury High School. All three of us are members of the Shrewsbury High School Building Committee that you authorized this past May, along with Beth Cassavant from the Select Board, who is serving as Chair, Sandra Fritz from the School Committee, who's serving as Vice Chair, Town Manager Mr. Mizikar, Public Buildings Division Head Joseph Sexton, and Community Members Robert Cox and Megan Vincent. Information on Article Eight has been available on the special town meeting website, including the slide deck used at the Finance Committee hearing, and an FAQ document, which was also provided to you in hard copy on your way in this evening. We will share a brief presentation to provide an overview of the article. We'll begin with a few key facts. Shrewsbury High School is one of only 22 potential projects out of 119 applications statewide that were chosen last year by the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or MSBA, for investment of their state funds. The MSBA runs an exhaustive process each year to determine which projects it will support using the priorities set out in the statute that created the MSBA. By this statute, the MSBA's second priority to consider for funding, only, second only after the overall safety of a structure, is to, quote, "eliminate existing severe overcrowding." The intent of the feasibility study is to partner with the state to explore jointly funding a solution to the severe overcrowding at Shrewsbury High School, and also leverage the state's financial support to replace building systems that will be nearing the end of life, including the roof, HVAC system, windows, et cetera, by expanding and renovating the existing SHS facility. As referenced in your FAQ document, the High School Building Committee and the MSBA both recognized that any potential project would involve an addition and renovation of the current SHS building. The funding appropriation you'll vote on this evening will enable the town to engage an owner's project manager, or OPM, and a designer, an architectural firm, to conduct a feasibility study and create a schematic design that proposes the most cost-effective solution for a potential building project. This is the exact same process we went through with the Sherwood Middle School project and the Major Howard W. Beal project. Both were projects we partnered with MSBA. It's a highly detailed process that enables the MSBA and the town in order to determine and agree upon what the specifics for a proposed project would be and what the estimated cost of that project would be, so that a decision can then be made at that time by the town whether to fund an actual project. The earliest that town meeting in Shrewsbury voters would vote on a potential project is the fall of 2027, so two years from now. You can see from this timeline that the earliest special town meeting and townwide votes would be in the fall of 2027. If the, that were to proceed from there, then the estimated completion of the project would be in August 2030 at the earliest, and November 2032 at a later estimate, depending on the time needed for design and construction. At this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Bizidlow, who will give you some information on Shrewsbury High School capacity and enrollment.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. To give an understanding, to help you give an understanding of the capacity and enrollment at Shrewsbury High School, the building was, when it opened in 2002, it was built for 1,475 students. We quickly accelerated due to town building growth and surpassed the overall capacity. Recently, MSBA has current design standards, which took the square footage of our building and then gave a different enrollment for specialized program, specialized programming, students with disabilities and other specialized programming. That contemporary design capacity is now by the MSBA at 1,250 students. This is just a line graph showing the projection enrollment since 21, 22 school year, all the way to 21, 2031, 32, through the McKibben enrollment projection, independent enrollment projection conducted to determine what the town high school enrollment would be moving forward. Currently, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education require the school department to report on October 1st total enrollment. On October 1st, Shrewsbury High School had 1,899 students, far exceeding both the original design capacity and the contemporary design capacity. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Girardi, who will walk us through some other enrollment issues.
The MSBA conducted an independent study using their own methodology, which includes reviewing historical enrollment, town demographics, and known future housing development. The MSBA sent a letter to the town of Shrewsbury just yesterday, on October 21st, that states that has calculated a design enrollment of 1,940 students for this potential project. MSBA arrived at its independent design enrollment calculation as follows. It uses a historical enrollment and current demographic data to derive a 10-year average of projected enrollments through 2035 in order to determine a baseline enrollment, which was 1,735 students. They then adjust the baseline when they conduct a review of changes in yearly increases of students in one grade to the next, which is called a cohort survival ratio, and that added an additional 75 students to the baseline. That means students stay in town from K through grade 12. Also, a projection of fluctuations in out-of-district enrollment levels, that is an addition of 40 students to the baseline. And then they do a review of data regarding known housing developments in Shrewsbury to determine potential enrollment impact, and that provided an additional 90 students to the baseline, thus giving us the total of 1,940 students in the design enrollment. So this slide just adds the final piece here, just, which shows the difference in students between MSBA's independent design, design enrollment, 10-year enrollment of 1,940 students, to the contemporary design capacity, which is 1,250 students. That is a difference of 690 students, or 55% difference. It's also important to note that the MSBA takes careful consideration with their design enrollment, as it is intended to solve Shrewsbury High School's existing severe overcrowding. They don't, they do not intend to come up too small and have the town go back to them at a later time. And they also do not intend to go too large of a design enrollment, as their use of state dollars, you know, they are responsible to make sure that they do not build something So when we spoke about the additional 90 students to the baseline, when we presented to Finance Committee, we had a number in the presentation of 1,855. That number was adjusted by MSBA that we received just yesterday, which gave us the 1,940 students based on their updated enrollment information. This slide here shows the, the projects that are in the pipeline and the number of bedroom units that each of those projects have. And this is how MSBA derives the additional 90 students for the, of the projects in the pipeline. And they look primarily at, or they look mostly at, the two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and four-bedroom units to derive how many students would be coming out of each of the different complexes. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Girardi. So just to summarize, one of the key benefits of partnering with the MSBA is that they will pick up more than half the costs of the feasibility study itself. The latest reimbursement rate assigned to Shrewsbury, which is based on our socioeconomic status, is 52.26%. The vote you're going to be taking this evening, as Mr. Mizikar mentioned, is to decide whether appropriate funding for the feasibility study process, not the project itself. That'll be at a later date. The total appropriation requested is $3 million. However, because the reimbursement rate is 52-plus percent, and that would occur as the feasibility study is undertaken, the maximum net cost to the town is estimated at $1.4 million. The MSBA does require a town meeting to demonstrate the ability to fund the entire $3 million cost on its own, but it is not anticipated that any borrowing will be necessary, and that that maximum of, estimate of $1.4 million would come from the free cash allocation that's listed in Article Eight. So, on behalf of the school department, I strongly recommend that you vote in the affirmative so that we can conduct the feasibility study process, so that a detailed project proposal and cost estimate can be provided to you and our fellow townspeople can determine at that time whether to move forward with an actual expansion and renovation project for Shrewsbury High School. The school committee did vote 5-0 to recommend that town meeting vote to support this project, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Questions or comments with reference to Article Eight?
Bridget Hilton, Precinct Seven. Easy yes for me, but my question is about that cap, that 1949, I think was the number, 1940, or something like that. Having lived in the town in 2006, when the new high school was built and was already not big enough for the population, and seeing how much development we have going on and things like that, are we tied to that number? Does taking the funds from the state mean we can't build a school bigger than that? Or is there some sort of, like, is that just an estimate and we can do what we want?
Sure, I appreciate the question. And this is information that we just received yesterday, as Mr. Girardi noted, and the High School Building Committee will review it, and then will determine whether to sign off and agree with this design enrollment. You know, my understanding and our work with the MSBA process before is that they go through a very thorough analysis, and as Mr. Girardi referenced, they're looking to right-size the projects they invest in to make sure that they're large enough to meet the need, but not overly large in taking more taxpayer dollars than required to make us, to create a solution. Once this number is agreed upon, and the Building Committee will vote at that in its next meeting, the, that will be the number that is used for designing the project. And so the feasibility study will use that as the estimate of the student population to be designed for. A design capacity doesn't mean you never go over that number at some point. Sometimes you might be under that number. They look at that as essentially a 10-year average going out to 2035. And a variety of things based on MSBA regulations, such as how much square footage needs to be allotted for certain elements of a building, a school building, or a school addition, are based on square footage per student, so that's why that design capacity is really important. But that would be the number that any proposed project would be designed around.
Further comments or questions? Mr. Adler.
Hi, everyone. Mark Adler, Precinct One. I come today to speak specifically about the feasibility study, not to speak about the, you know, potential debt exclusion that would be down the road, should we get to that, and not furthermore to speak about the capacity issue. There is no doubt in my mind, I think there's no doubt in anyone's mind, that it's over, far over, the capacity. I, I welcome this slide, but I don't think it adds anything that we all don't know from personal experience. And I say this not just as someone who's, who no longer has kids in the school, because he's gone on to college, but I think the feasibility study itself is a crucial step, even if, in the end, this body chooses not to appropriate the funds when the time comes to build this project. And even if the voters choose not to approve the debt exclusion, that would be necessary to do that. A feasibility study for both sides is very practical, very important, and it tells us what we can and can't do with this. It's important for us to always remember where the town needs to go. And I'll just wrap this up by saying, we have capacity issues in our town. We all know that the town grew a lot in the last 15, 20 years. We don't know exactly where the town is growing, although this chart is giving us a sense of it. And there's a feeling in the community that maybe we've grown not enough, and there's a feeling in the community that maybe we've grown too much, and we need to look into all of these. But for right now, this feasibility study is crucial to figuring out what we can do going forward. Thank you.
Further comments or questions? Now, let's see, who's new? Right behind Mrs. Ghulie, then Mrs. Ghulie.
Hi.
Hi.
Diane Jones, Precinct Eight. So my husband is Bob Sessino. I don't know if any of you know him. He taught Shrewsbury High School forever. I mean, just forever. If you grew up here, you probably had him, and if you had kids who grew up here, you probably had him. So, at dinner tonight, he knew that we were going to discuss this, and he told me four times what it's like to teach in overcrowded high school. And it really humanizes it. The first three times, I thought, "Uh-oh, I'm still married to my husband and he's still telling me things multiple times." And then he told me the fourth time, and I went, "Oh, this is really good." Okay, so this is what he described. Most of the teachers have to move from one room to another in order to teach. They don't have their own room. That means that the room is literally not theirs. They don't necessarily have the right dry erase color markers with them to do what they're doing. And that sounds tiny, but they have to move from one room to the next. And that means they have to gather up all of their stuff, which is difficult. And that means they don't have enough time in the classroom, because they have to finish the classroom two and a half minutes earlier than they normally would. They gather up their stuff, and then they have to push through the hallways where there are too many students. But there are also teachers in those hallways now. And some of those teachers are pushing carts with all of their stuff on them, and people can't get through. So they get to their next classroom late, and they arrive there and they have to set up all their stuff. And that takes about two and a half minutes. Now, that's five minutes of instruction time lost. In four days, that's 20 minutes. In two weeks, that's an entire class that's been missed. Over the course of the year, I think that's about 20 days of class time lost. That's pretty damned impressive. And it harms the relationship between the teacher and the students. Normally, students can come up at the end of the class and say, "Excuse me, Mr. Sessino? I got to talk to you about something." Mr. Sessino would say, "Of course." But they can't say that. They say, "I've got to gather all my stuff together and get to the next room. I can't really talk to you." So it's stressful for the teachers, it's stressful for the students, and it absolutely takes the quality of education and drops it down. And in a town like Shrewsbury, which really cares about education, we really need to work on this. Thank you.
Louise Garone, Precinct Eight. I have, I think it's the reverse image of Bridget Hilton's question. Given the way the Federal Department of Education has been gutted, Massachusetts programs that depend on funds from the Federal Department of Education are likely to suffer during the time period, not only of this design, but of our construction. So what I'm asking is, what if, through no fault of our own, we were forced... Every teacher gets their own room, because those 225 spaces that were allocated for special education and special programs, if those special education and special programs suddenly ceased to exist, what risk are we taking on?
Sure, I guess, could you just clarify? When you say 225 spaces, I'm not quite sure what you mean by that.
Look at your capacity.
Yeah, that, the capacity...
Look at your capacity. The difference is 225, right there. 1,475 down to 1,250.
Right, and those are the number of students it's designed for. That's, that's a difference in student it's designed for, not spaces.
Okay, okay, but a student fills a space.
Yep. So, but to your larger question about federal funding, so the good news is, is that the Mass State Building Authority program is funded through state funds. One penny of our sales tax goes to that program. Because of the extraordinary increase in construction costs that were experienced post-pandemic, there were actually some additional allocations from the state legislature to provide funding for projects that were already in process, and also make sure that it could meet as many project needs as it could across the state. But it is a limited budget, which is why only 22 of the 119 projects that were requested last year are actually being funded. So the MSBA has put aside funding in their planning, assuming that at some point this project will go forward. They hope it will, because they hope all their projects go forward, because they've set aside money for it. When projects don't go forward, and that does happen certainly where communities will vote no, they have to return to the drawing board and reallocate those funds for another worthy project. So they're looking to fund what they think are the most important ones. As far as any loss of federal funding, in the scheme of our budget, while it's certainly important amounts of money, about 2-point-something million dollars a year for special education, a few hundred thousand a year for Title I, those are the major federal grant funds that we receive on, on an allocation that we get, just as an entitlement each year, a few others that are, that are tens of thousands of dollars that, it would be, it would hurt if we lost all that federal funding. There's no, there's no indication we're going to in the coming fiscal year, which is good news, but if that were to happen, we would certainly, would put pressure on our local funds. But the vast majority of funding for our educational program comes from local funding and state funding. The amount of federal funding is a relatively small percentage, so relative to this project, what happens at the federal level is unlikely to have any significant impact.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 8? Anybody new? If not, we'll start on the left. Mr. Malina. I'm sorry. Hold on. Right after him, I'll get you. Go ahead. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Henry Fitzgerald, Precinct 6. I'm reasonably familiar with the high school, having been chairman of the project way back when. I fully support the feasibility study. What's concerning me is the scope of what I'm seeing. This is almost a 50% increase from the new guidelines that we need to the capacity of what this school has to be. It means not just a matter of adding classrooms, but all the other support spaces. So I'm probably telling this group that's going to run, including Mr. Cox next to me, that this is not an easy project. It's going to be a substantial project, and I'm sure the cost is going to come right along with it, but I just want people to know, this is not just a simple addition. This is quite extensive, in my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Malina.
Jason Malina, Precinct 10. Fully support this. Just a question about the estimates that went into figuring out the capacity, and I know that MSBA is, you know, they, this is their standard in how to do this, but my question specifically is about, like, the role of ADUs in calculating the capacity. Do we know if the MSBA is factoring in ADUs in their program? Because ADUs were relatively new to the state, forced, you know, forced to be applied across the state, and if we don't know the answer to that, that's fine, but if you have the answer, it'd be great to hear that. So my other question to that is, do we know if permits, the permits for ADUs, are they coming in hot, or they're coming in as low? Is there any material difference that we would need to factor in for the count of additional housing stock?
Let's answer the second one first. Go ahead.
I mean, they're not fly, yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead, Keith.
Six ADU permits in the queue right now.
Five or six units. Mr., Dr. Sawyer, please.
My understanding is that that's not something that MSBA had any information on when they calculated. They do their own demographic study based on state data they have for population and different types of population. If you click on the link of the methodology, if you have the electronic version of the FAQ, you can see the detailed methodology they use, but they did, as Mr. Girardi referenced, ask us specifically, when they met with town officials in late August, and went over what their baseline projection was and what other factors they were considering, they specifically asked us for data around two and three-bedroom apartments, because they wanted to be sure that they had a good handle on what kind of growth in housing was, was already known to be in the pipeline in Shrewsbury, and that's where they came up with that additional 90-student adjustment to their estimate for design capacity.
Mr. Kirk.
Chris Kirk, Precinct 1. Two, two questions. The first is, I really don't know what we're buying regarding that graph that you had up earlier. It showed that, that MSBA is, design enrollment for 1,940, and that right now there are 1,899. I know this sounds like a stupid question, but I don't care. Does that mean that you're, you are planning to build to accommodate 41 more students than are in there, or are you going to design to make the billing so that it, a billing that was accommod, originally designed to accommodate 4, 1,475, will now, at that level of, of, that crowding, now be rebuilt, built, renovated, so that it accommodate 1,940 at that, at the original level of, of enrollment?
Correct. It's not designed for the current enrollment we have. We're severely overcrowded right now with the 1,899. The original design capacity was the 1,475 you see there in the red line and the green line. If you take the MSBA's program and requirements for space for different educational spaces, and lots of changes have happened between 2002, when this building opened, and the three years before that, when it was designed, and their current standards, the square footage of the high school today, which is about 290,000 square feet, if I'm not mistaken, MSBA would say that square footage would be, would yield a design for 1,250 students. So they're looking to take it from, what, 1,250 student, a level of space, to space that would properly accommodate 1,940 students.
So you're going to add enough room to accommodate 690 students?
That's the idea, right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. And the other thing is, I don't know how the MSBA, I, I know you said it's available online, but I don't know how they got that 1,940, because on the one hand, the McKibben projection is that it's going to, the enrollment will go down, but on the other hand, in December, we're going to consider a, a two-year moratorium on new construction to figure out what the future of construction is usually going to be. So that seems to me to muddy any reasonable attempt to make an estimation of future enrollment.
I, I think the, what I would suggest is that the MSBA's process is using more recent data than the McKibben, the McKibben report did not have many of these housing starts and projects were not in existence at that time, so that adjustment of 90 students in particular is different between the McKibben report and the data they had to use and what the MSBA was able to use to make this current estimate. In terms of, you know, whether there's a moratorium, or whether there's more housing that is built over time, the MSBA makes its best estimate based on demographics and other factors in terms of their analysis of the, again, their, their whole intent is to make sure that they're not allowing local communities to build bigger than what they think is necessary, and they also want to be sure that they don't build too small, so that whatever money they invest in a project is not adequate to solve the problem.
Further comments or questions? Krista Dupree, then we'll go to you.
Krista Dupree, Precinct 1. Mr. Moderator, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind, for, with the follow-ups. I was curious, back at the slide with the housing projects, if you don't mind, Dr. Sawyer. Thank you. So is this including things that are currently in development, or is this everything, or coming down the line? In addition, is this also including, compared to, I believe it's called the Housing Production Plan that the town has? I don't know if this is more for Mr. Mizikar than Dr. Sawyer, but I'm just curious how they kind of mesh together with, because I'm very aware, obviously, of 40B on Main Street, for example. Thank you.
Mr. Mizikar, would you care to, we'll pine on this.
Yes, thank you. So there's a mix of places within the pipeline, if you will, where these projects fall. Some of them are complete. Harrington, you know, that project's complete. There's some of them that are barely, you know, at the, not even at planning board yet, like 525 Hartford Turnpike. So this is just a general sense of our development team of what's recently come on the market and what may likely be coming on the market, all subject to change, especially, you know, those projects that are further out, the 2029 timeframes, you know, so it is a wide variety. The Housing Production Plan doesn't set a number of specific houses to be built. It identifies types of houses and looks at affordability and need, so there's no way to correlate these projects with the Housing Production Plan necessarily. What I will say as to 40B, and to Mr. Kirk's comment about us coming back in December, if the board does decide to move forward with that warrant, is that with the 40B projects that are reasonably in the pipeline and likely to continue and come to development, we will finally achieve that 10% affordability, which means we wouldn't be subject to 40B for a period of time, likely through the 2040 census. So we do think that this group of housing projects that we show up here is probably a peak over the course of the near future as to what we may see in town if we take actions with regards to where we are within the 40B standing with the state.
My follow-up question, or a couple of questions. Does MSBC, MSB, MSBA include, as in their projected number, special education students as well as our new program of 18 to 22, in this projection of how they look at this building in their formulas? Thank you.
Sure, it would, it would include special education students, all students who'd be attending Shrewsbury High School in grades nine through 12. It would not include the students who had already finished Shrewsbury High School and who are in the RISE program, for our age 18 and 22 students who are service there, so it would not include those numbers.
Thank you. And where are we, if this does passes, I am in full support of this, what would be the next step after this timeframe of this feasibility study?
So, let me get the timeline.
Thank you.
So in December, and I know it's in your FAQ, there's a little bit more detail in your FAQ document on page two, but the next time that MSBA would be, their board would be meeting in a timeline from after this vote, this evening, if this vote is affirmative this evening, then we expect the MSBA board will vote to enter into a feasibility study agreement with the town in December. So following that, in the winter, in the new year 2026, we would be following the MSBA's specific process that we would have to go through to select an owner's project manager and an architect, and then, once they're selected sometime in the spring of this coming year, the study work would begin. If you, detailed information's in the question at the top of page two, there's actually three of the MSBA's modules that are covered by this allocation of $3 million forming the team, and then once that professional team is formed, they would conduct this initial feasibility study, and then from that point, they would go into an even more detailed schematic design that would be required to do the cost estimate. That would bring us to, no earlier than summer of 2027, is the earliest that MSBA would entertain a vote of an agreement for how much, how a project, a potential project would be estimated to cost, exactly what percentage they would pay back, because there's bonus points that we can get on top of this 52% baseline for things like green building, our maintenance practices, things that we were able to earn on our, on the Sherwood and Beal projects, and then there would be a very detailed, specific amount of money that the town would be entertaining, whether to support that project going forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Krista, you're one beyond, so let's...
Having been a longtime substitute teacher at the high school, I absolutely can echo what Diane's husband has gone through. Getting through the halls is very difficult. Even as a substitute teacher, you may be covering not just that one classroom, but multiple different classrooms, and trying to get from point A, point A, third floor to first floor, et cetera, et cetera, through the maze of students. I fully hope you also support this article with me. Thank you.
Mr. Costello.
Brian Costello, Precinct 9. Just from the handout, the funds are going to be used for that owner project management and designer, right? We get the feasibility study, and they're going to do sort of the schematics, which show proposed budget and things like that. Is that more or less right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. We recently did this with the warehouse, the garage project, and the firms chosen were pretty far off on their proposed budget and the actual budget. Do we have any data that's showing on these projects, which are incredibly complex, how accurate these proposed budgets actually come in, and do we have recourse if it's, if it's, for instance, the designer said it was X, and it turns out it's 40% over, or anything like that? Is there any way in these agreements, we get a way to hold these initial designers and project managers accountable?
I can, I can start. I can tell you our track record in Shrewsbury on these building projects is quite remarkable. The Beal project alone, we came in about 8% under budget. I know folks want to cite issues that we had with the DPW project. We're very transparent as the cost evolved over time. You know, we got rid of an architect, because we didn't like what they had to say. We have to be very transparent. We have to tell you that the cost increased by 10 million, you know, and just be open with that, so that's going to be part of the process. We'll communicate with you on that as we need to update the numbers. I ask that you don't hold that against us, because we need to evolve projects and be deliberate in those processes and identify errors when they have occurred. But I think the bottom line is, if you look at Sherwood, if you look at Beal, if you look at the police station, those projects that we were given the opportunity to estimate, construct, and take through the full design cycle and construction have all come in on time and notably under budget.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 8? Yes.
Hi. Jenna Adams, Precinct 9. First time, long time. I'm just curious if we conduct the feasibility study, which I hope we will approve. Will it also consider whether there should be an additional building, or is it all about expanding the current building? It's a lot of students in one place.
I want to be really clear that, from our perspective, certainly the school administration, certainly the school building committee so far in its meeting, and certainly the MSBA sees this as an addition renovation project for the existing high school, not building a second building. As much as I'd like to... a second building. As much as I'd like to pick out colors and maybe even a new mascot for a second high school in Shrewsbury before I retire, I'll take a pass on that. Thank you. It won't be necessary to have a second high school or a new building. Obviously, what we can't predict is exactly what the designer will see as the best, most cost-effective solution. And so, you know, could I rule out that there could be, you know, some freestanding element of something to, you know, house some mechanical equipment or something on the, on the site that helps make this project work as cost-effective as possible? We just don't know that yet. But I think, you know, we're pretty clear, and MSBA was very clear with us on their first call with us, was that this is looking absolutely like, in addition, to create more space and a renovation of the building. And again, it's in your FAQs, and we really haven't focused on it this much, but the building opened in 2002, people are shocked when they visit the building that it's almost 25 years old, because our buildings department does an excellent job keeping it up, and it was extremely well-built in the first place in design. All the schools that I've had the benefit of seeing built from when I came onboard, when Floral Street School opened in 1997, have held up really well, because those building committees, and thanking Mr. Fitzgerald and his leadership there, and everyone who's been involved, Mr. Cox, when he was part of that, made really smart decisions about building materials, how to build them well, so that these buildings last a really long time for our town. And the high school's no exception to that. So it looks like it's an addition. And then the renovation would be, it's going to need a new roof. It's going to need a new HVAC system. It's going to need new windows. You remember the cost of the Oak project, just those new windows? It is not cheap to do those kinds of things. And that's one of the real huge benefits, from my perspective, is that if MSBA, if ultimately this project goes forward a couple of years from now, and the MSBA is paying more than 50 cents on the dollar to replace all those systems, that to me would be a huge financial benefit to the community.
Are there any comments or questions? Are we ready to wrap it up? Do I see, I see a hand. Hold on, I see a hand. I see two hands. Let's go with the gentleman right there, and then we'll go to Ms. Daldado.
Hi, Raghu Ragunath, Precinct 5. I'm for this article, but my question is, it's going to take probably six, seven more years to get the new facility, if it's all approved and built. How are we going to manage until then? Are we going to keep stuffing kids into the same school? Are we going to have additional space? And, thank you.
Thank you. I mean, the high school team has done a remarkable job, Mr. Bizilow and his team, along with the public buildings folks, of repurposing spaces to be able to have the adequate office space, meeting space, instructional space, particularly for some of the specialized special education program we've had to add over time. You know, in terms of right now, the good news is that the estimate that MSBA is making is not significantly beyond our current population. Are there a lot of issues with having that many kids in the building that's not designed to be for that many kids? Absolutely. Are we making it work? We're making it work. And we'll make it work, and I think, you know, hopefully we'll see a light at the end of the tunnel, where we can have a right-sized space for our student population of high schoolers here in our community. But unless we had an unexpected significant increase in the next few years, you know, what we will do, what we've continued to do, which is to maximize the space we have everywhere we possibly can.
Ms. Daldado.
Deb Daldado, Precinct 8. As an educator and a former special ed director, space is very, very important. And we need more space in our building. My son was a student in the high school right after it first opened. I have three children that went to the high school, and I have three grandchildren that live in the community. And when they get to high school, they need more space. So this is the first step. So let's just move forward with the first step. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Right up toward the rear. Right behind you, there's a mic.
Raju Palapati, Precinct 4. I have one question, that is, if I look at the graphs, it's a continuous increase for the first five years.
Could you keep the mic closer to your mouth, sir?
Sure. I see it's a continuous increase for the last 10 years now. So we are overdue for 10 years. We are taking a step in the 10th year, after it started increasing. So my question is, how do we prevent this kind of, you know, these instances in the future? I mean, why don't we plan ahead, so we can actually take care of these, like he asked, what will the kids do for the next five years? So that's 15 years of, you know, overcrowding at our high school. Can we do some proactive, take some proactive measures?
Dr. Sawyer?
Sure, I can respond to that. So a couple of things. First off, the Sherwood and the Beal projects really wrapped up about a quarter century of capital planning that the town had done to address what were the greatest needs of the school district in terms of space. And very wisely, Mr. Morgato, when he was the town manager, asked this body, when you actually did the same vote you're taking tonight for the Beal project, actually asked town meeting to allocate an additional $100,000, so that when the Beal project was completed, a capital study could be completed, what hadn't been done since just after Floral Street opened in 1997. And that capital study was completed. And based on that capital study, the school committee determined that the severe overcrowding at the high school was the most significant next step for us to take. There's also other needs that we'll have in the future that that study references. Subsequently, the following year, or a couple of years ago, there was an elementary capital space study that has some findings around what would be next at the elementary level, because I certainly know the school committee's intent is to make sure that, you know, what the greatest capital needs of the school district are, you know, what they should be attended to. And certainly, in a perfect world, you can do multiple projects at once and make things happen. But in terms of what the town was able to do, and what was most needed at the time, the Sherwood project and the Beal project were certainly more needed at the time than addressing the high school overcrowding.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 8? Yes.
Lee Abdallah, Precinct 9, and I'd like to move the question.
Certainly. A motion has been made to move the question. Is there a second?
Second.
The second has been made. We will now take a vote on ending debate. All those in favor of moving on and ending debate on Article 8 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. We will now go to a vote on Article 8. This requires a two-thirds vote because of the authorization for borrowing. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. It looks like our work this evening has been completed, so I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. We look forward to catching up with all of you on December 17th for the special.